Here.
Lloyd Stone.
Here.
Very good. We have a quorum. Please join me with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience or anyone connected to us electronically to come forward and speak about anything that you wish, preferably other than items later on on the agenda. Rose, are you there?
I am. There's no one online.
Thank you very much. Okay, approval of the minutes. We have a set of minutes from the regular meeting of the planning commission from June 15th. Have the commissioners had an opportunity to look at them? And if so, any questions, comments, or a motion? Someone like to move to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Christians moved to approve it. Do we have support?
Support.
Supported by Matt. Any other questions, comments? The roll call, please.
McGee.
Yes.
Hauser.
Yes.
Bixson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Kenjuk.
Yes.
Stone.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Next item is public hearings, and we do not have any schedule for tonight. Number six is considerations. A, the Granary, 303 East University Drive. Vidya, are you with us? There you are.
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. At the city's request, we have reviewed a proposal from Dominic Mosheri to construct a multiple-family residential development with 30 units within three buildings on a 1.99 acre site that is located on the southeast corner of East University Drive and Water Street and which is commonly known as the elevator building site. The site is split zone with the northeast portion of the site, north would be on the left side of your screen. So the northeast portion of the site is zoned B1, while the remaining portion of the site is zoned I1. Now, the proposed use involves three residential buildings, Buildings 1, 2, and 3, with a total of 30 units, 13, 6, and 11 units respectively. And the applicant envisions Buildings 1 and 2 with 19 units as live workspaces. Now, the B1 and the I1 districts both do not express street permit residential uses. However, an applicant has got the option of applying for consideration as a special project if the site is included within the special projects boundary line as noted on the future land use plan in the master plan. Now, a special project grants the planning commission flexibility in order to listen to a developer present a project that might serve a larger public benefit and that could lead to innovative or creative development of the site that could not otherwise be accomplished under its current zoning, existing zoning. The challenge here is that the site is split zone, and at this time, the B1 portion of the site is not within the special projects boundary, while the I1 portion is in the special projects boundary. This was one of the parcels that actually resulted in the city council recently adopting an amendment after a recommendation from the planning commission that special project approval may be granted for development projects only if they are located on property designated as special project on the city's adopted master plan or other non-residential or multiple-family zone property adjacent to the special project overlay district boundary line, subject to city council approval upon recommendation from the planning commission. So basically, the applicant is requesting approval from you to extend this line. My cursor is pointing at the line. This portion of the site is zoned I1, and this portion is zoned B1. This is in the special projects boundary. This portion is not. Per the new amendment that was adopted by the city council, the applicant is requesting consideration from the planning commission to extend this boundary line to pick up the entire parcel under the special projects provision. Per the master plan that was adopted by the city in April of 2022, this site is designated as mixed use, which the planning commission recently had public hearings on. It is split into mixed use and mixed use 1, and this particular site is placed in our mixed use 1 category. I did have an opportunity to review this proposal once before. I had a lot of comments, and the applicant took those comments and feedback and made a lot of revisions to the proposal. At this time, my letter still has several comments, but these are comments that probably need to be addressed at the planning commission in order to receive your feedback. Only then can the applicant make any necessary corrections if required or make additional changes that the planning commission might want before it's formally considered. Now, the subtitle that the applicant has provided includes a traffic study that anticipates a minimal number of trips generated from the 30 units over here, since most of them are live-work style apartments. The study notes that all of the intersections are working at acceptable levels of service, with the exception of northbound traffic at the East University-Water Street intersection. So basically, all of them are at acceptable level of service except for the northbound traffic in this particular intersection. This currently functions at an LOS E. LOS refers to level of service. Typically, level of service is designated anywhere from A through F, A being the best level of service, F being a failed level of service. E is one level above F, basically. So the applicant has stated that right now the intersection operates at a level of service E, and after the proposed development, it will continue to operate at a level of service E. The study concludes that this particular project will have minimal impact on the area's network or traffic, so no improvements are required. My review of the data shows that the current level of service at that intersection is 39.6 seconds, which basically means a vehicle waits for 39.6 seconds for the light to change in order to make a turn movement. Now, the same intersection will still be at LOS E, but the delay per vehicle will actually be 48.4 seconds. While it might still technically be within the LOS E, the number of seconds that it takes for a vehicle to make that turn movement is going to increase from 39.6 to 48.4 seconds. The roads, Water Street, is within the city of Rochester's jurisdiction, and the applicant responded that, I quote, "In an urban environment, the delay is not that significant, and the report did not find any improvements necessary." I bring it before the planning commission because traffic has always been a concern on any reasonable-sized project that has come before the city in the past several years. As the applicant said, traffic is something that is common in urban areas, but it seems to get more aggravated as the days go by with every single development added. So mitigation measures are required in order to make sure that the quality of life due to increased traffic on the surrounding streets is not impacted. So at this time, the planning commission can offer the applicant feedback on their traffic study. I'm sure the applicant has some explanation which they can provide additionally when they present. The planning commission can either accept the traffic study as presented or require the submission of additional information. We had previously expressed concerns about the fact that the intersection is so close to the entry point of Water Street. However, the city engineer did have an opportunity to review it and propose the design where they have this little island which allows for in and right turn only. So this design has already been approved by the city engineer, and this is a city-owned street. So that's where that particular comment comes from. The site plan submitted by the applicant also includes a fire truck turning movements. So basically, a fire truck that enters between Buildings 1 and 3 is going to go all the way till the end, and it will have to reverse out all the way. I had concerns whether that is an acceptable circulation pattern, and I defer to the fire chief. The applicant did make a statement that the fire chief has already reviewed the proposal and found it to be acceptable. However, a written letter from the fire chief would be necessary in order to ensure that the fire department's needs are met. Similarly, the proposal for trash removal on the site is that each of these units will have trash cans in the garage, and on trash pickup day, they will place the trash cans outside. This is going to be their driveway. The trash cans are going to be placed outside for curbside pickup. So by the same measure, a trash hauler will have to come all the way in here and back up all the way out over here. The applicant has made a note. The applicant did submit a response letter just a few days ago which said that this is not an uncommon scenario. However, I would actually like to see a trash truck turn movement template. I want to see how the truck can go all the way in and back up all the way out safely. I had suggested if there is any possibility of a turnaround, but the applicant has noted that there's really no room to provide any kind of turnaround. So that is a concern that the applicant needs to address. All of these stubs that you see on the abutting roads, these are all sidewalk connections from the individual units to the public sidewalk. I just wanted to make sure the applicant is aware that sidewalks on private property can be three or four feet wide, which is what they are, but any sidewalk within a public right of way must be five feet wide, and the applicant has conquered that. The plan will comply. So when reviewing the proposal, I could not exactly make out which of the units were barrier-free accessible and which were not. So the summation in my letter is based upon what I thought it was presenting, but the applicant's response letter states that all of the units on the first floor of Buildings 1 and 2 are barrier-free accessible, and one unit is barrier-free accessible in Building 3. A ramp is not shown because apparently the sidewalk is at the same grade as the lower-level unit, except I don't know which one of these units is barrier-free. I'm assuming it's the closest one, but that is something the applicant would need to identify. There are ramps shown over here for access to these units, but I'm not sure how the access would work from this sidewalk to these units. If all of these units are also barrier-free accessible, I don't know if a three-foot-wide sidewalk connector will meet ADA requirements to provide the necessary barrier-free access to the live-work unit. If these were not barrier-free access units, I would say three to four feet on private property is acceptable, but this is something that needs to comply with ADA codes. If ADA says that three to four is acceptable, I'm fine with it, but since these are supposed to be for those who are handicapped, I need to make sure that they meet the minimum requirement that is required under the federal ADA guidelines. Several of the landscaping that is shown on the landscape plan, I'll scroll to it later, those landscaping is shown actually over here, outside of the applicant's property limits. They're actually located on the neighbor's property. So in order to make the plantings on the neighbor's property, the applicant needs to get a dedicated easement from the neighboring property owner to install the landscaping on their site. And the easement also needs to have a maintenance agreement in place. Now, applicant responded that they're working with that property owner to get a license. I'm not sure what a license for landscaping is because it has to be an easement that can be recorded. Because if the landscaping being proposed is to meet greenbelt requirements, we need to make sure that someday if this property owner decides to make an expansion, the greenbelt does not remove. The greenbelt needs to remain. So a permanent landscaping easement needs to be provided. The plan also shows a connection to the Paint Creek Trail, and one of my inquiries was, how does this connect to the trail? And the applicant has clarified that there is a brick-paved pathway that this connects to the network that moves this way into the Paint Creek Trailway system. The landscape plan had a slight discrepancy, which is just minor. The island was missing on the landscape plan. The applicant has agreed that they will make the revisions in order to show the same island on the landscape plan also. The plan shows two benches over here. I will zoom in so the planning commission can see. There are two benches shown at the proposed trailway connection. It just seemed a little odd that you have benches facing a commercial parking lot. But the applicant has explained that the benches are intended to give a place for pedestrians who are on the trail connector to actually rest. So they may be acceptable if the planning commission finds that that is a suitable location for those benches. I have the slight correction because the elevations and the plans differently refer to these buildings as six-plex, 11-plex, and 13-plex, and sometimes refer to them as live-work or townhouses. The reference to the buildings must be consistent on all sheets. If they are being called Building 1, 2, and 3, they need to be called that in all of the sheets. It's a little difficult to try and figure out on which sheet what it's being called as, and the applicant has mentioned that we will make the correction. The elevation sheets that are provided for some of the buildings, the scale, the architectural scale noted on them is incorrect. And the reason for that is the plan size is so large that the applicant had reduced it in order to fit it on the sheet that was presented to the planning commission. I have no problem with the plan size being reduced, but in that case, the scale needs to be deleted from those plans, and it needs to be stated as not to scale. You cannot have a drawing reduced and have the scale not show what exactly is being proposed. That is a minor detail, but a very important detail because if it's not to scale, please remove the scale and just note it as not to scale. The buildings that are proposed over here are, the height is, this building is 41.05 feet. This building is also 41.05 feet, and this building is 33 feet. Now, building height is measured to the midpoint of a peaked roof. I can scroll down to the architectural elevations. This, if the planning commission will bear with me, these are really big plans, so it's scrolling to the plans. I'll reduce the size so that I can scroll a bit faster. I want to show you the elevations on the screen. These are the, this is the landscape plan where I mentioned the landscaping is on the neighbor's property. Going to the architectural elevations. Okay, this is a colored rendering of the site, which shows the landscaping in color. This is a photometric plan for the site. The applicant has submitted an extensive and detailed submission packet, so it has got all of the information that would possibly be reviewed. Sorry, there's just a lot of sheets and these lines. Okay, here is the elevation for one of the buildings. So the height is measured to the midpoint of the peak. So the building height that I'm referencing, when I say 40.5, it is to this point. It is to the midpoint till here. So this distance would be above that. But the correct way of measuring building height is as the applicant has shown. The packet that they have submitted to the planning commission also includes the skyline test, which basically shows if an individual, an average-sized individual, which typically we use is around 5'10" to 6' feet, standing on Main Street looking either east or west should not be able to see the rooftop of any building that would overwhelm the downtown skyline. The applicant has provided those drawings in the packet, and they appear to meet the skyline test. The planning commission can seek additional information from the applicant if they have any additional questions. The site is a contaminated site for the applicant, and Phase 1 and 2 of an environmental study have been done. I did not have an opportunity to look at the environmental study copy, but the applicant has made me aware that a copy has been submitted to the city, so I will obtain a copy of that for my review. Per the applicant, the public benefit of the project is creating new jobs during the construction period, supporting the local economy through the live-work space, cleaning up the blighted property and historic preservation rehabilitation of the elevator building site. There was an additional statement made on their special projects information sheet, which wasn't really relevant because it was not backed by any data. So I requested the applicant to delete that statement, and the applicant has agreed to do that. The most important component of this whole site is the identification of the site as the elevator site. Now, the applicant did submit a detailed narrative on the history of the elevator or the barn building, and that analysis was done by a firm called A.O. Christian &amp; Son Incorporated. That analysis was done at the time when the property owner was considering dismantling of the barn and storing it before they decided where the eventual location of the barn would be. That was a few years ago when the city was considering maybe it should be placed on the farmer's market site and in the meantime stored off-site. So the study was done at the time to provide a cost estimate for what it would cost to take that barn apart and store it for the long term. It is unclear, however, if the author of that particular report is a registered historic architect. This structure is on the National Register for Historic Places, and the report that the applicant provided with the previous submitted stated that this elevator is also referred to as the Griggs Brother, or the Rochester Elevator Company Grain Elevator is an excellent example of 19th-century wooden country grain elevator. At this time, the elevations and the narrative state that the structure will be restored and converted to a community clubhouse for residents and the public. The structure will be provided with new roof, windows, doors, a glass conservatory, and new trim. Per the letter that the applicant has submitted, the structure is deemed as not being safe, and the changes that the applicant is making to the structure will remove it effectively from the National Register of Historic Places. It will no longer be considered as a historically designated building. So by the applicant's statement, I know previously Mr. Banda had also provided some information stating the safety concerns with the building. However, for the planning commission to make a determination, more than a written statement, a report from a structural engineer or a registered historic architect is required in order to ensure that the structure truly cannot be saved as it stands today and needs the changes that the applicant is proposing in order to leave it standing in any form. So at this time, the project is before the planning commission for the first step of consideration. It is in its preliminary phase where, because of the scope of the project, the planning commission gets to review it in detail. Typically, an applicant does not provide as comprehensive a packet as Mr. Mosheri has provided, so the planning commission can provide feedback, ask questions, and any additional documentation they may need from the applicant in order to provide them guidance with what needs to be submitted in order to move to the next step. I would be happy to answer any questions that the planning commission might have and scroll through any relevant pages of the site plan as the applicant makes their presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Vidya. Just for the benefit of the public watching or in the room, there will be no approval decisions made tonight. This is strictly a presentation and discussion. Any further action on this will come much later on. So I just, I just wanted to make that clear. For the commissioners, questions for Vidya? Rich?
Yes, Vidya, in regards to the traffic study, the timing when it was done, was it done before or after the business closed?
I believe it was done after the business closed. This traffic study was done, I believe it was done sometime last year. I will defer to the applicant to give the exact date when the study was done. In their response letter, they did provide a comparison of what the traffic generated from their proposed use versus the existing previous use, which was the retail use of the site was, and why the traffic they generate is going to be so much less than what was previously on the site.
Let me ask the representatives here, do you know when that traffic study was done? Yeah, please. Just state your name and...
Dominic Mosheri. Dominic Mosheri, Mosheri Companies. The traffic study was done while it was operating, after we had closed on the property. But there's also a little bit of confusion in regards to the traffic study that we can talk to during a presentation unless you want to address it now.
No, we'll wait. You can do it. You can do it.
Yep.
Okay, Rich, that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions at this point for the planner? Okay, at this point, I'd ask the team to come forward, if you would, and make your presentation.
Let's see if I can figure this out again. Okay. Okay, again, Dominic Mosheri with Mosheri Companies. I'm joined with Nancy Standish from Giffords Webster and Dominic Tringali, our in-house architect. Vidya did a great job summarizing the proposal, very in-depth. All of her constructive criticisms are going to be taken to account and addressed at the next meeting. I think we should start off with the traffic study, if you don't mind, and then Dominic Tringali can kind of dive into the architectural stuff and all other inquiries that you may have.
Right.
Nancy Standish, Giffords Webster. So the traffic study, the report was written in October of 2022. Counts were done in September of 2022. The site was operating at that time. And there's a little bit of confusion over this delay. So the delay with the 39 seconds that Vidya was referring to is the current delay for northbound and the right turn. It's a combined lane at the intersection.
This is stop sign delay?
Yes, yes.
Not a signal?
Nope, it's a stop sign delay. And there's a, there's a missing piece there. So once we get the existing conditions, we ask the municipality what their growth factor is in traffic. And we take that into account each year until the site is projected to open up. And we get then what the existing traffic is at that point. So at that point, the existing delay for the through right turn lane is 45 seconds, without this development even being open. It goes from 39 to 45 seconds. Then, once people move into our development, the delay goes from 45 seconds to 45, or to 48 seconds. So there's really only a three-second delay that this development is causing at the intersection. The remainder is just general population growth in the area. And then we also did provide, you know, the existing site, if it was fully operational, what those traffic, and then we also have done some level of service evaluation at the intersection, and that actually goes down to an F as opposed to staying at an E like it will with this development. And then we also looked at, there was an option at some point to do strictly office on the site, and that, while not as bad as the existing use, it's worse than the proposed use.
Did you look at any optional traffic patterns or equipment or signaling?
We did not, because it wasn't necessary. I mean, a three-second change in delay is nothing. I mean, you just count to three, and that was the additional delay.
But is there any way to improve that intersection?
That I don't know. We didn't analyze it. I don't know, maybe if you put a light out there, you're really late waiting 30 to 45 seconds, depending on the timing of the light anyway.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, and I might add that I talked with the police chief, et cetera. So right now, it's impossible to get a parking count in the city because of Dequender and Avon. So everybody's cutting wherever they go, so you can't get anything. But most importantly, it does, this was a retail operation with one open curb all along Water Street. So people just, they didn't come into a driveway. They kind of drive up on the curb. We all do it. We go get our salt, your bird seed, whatever. So it's kind of a free-for-all there, and it was constantly going with retail. So at this point, when you look at the site plan, I'm sure Mr. Tringali will talk about this, there's other points of entry now. The back, people can come around the back. They can come around the side. There's, you can go farther down University. So they're really spreading out the traffic, the 30 units. And again, live-work, this isn't everybody going to work at 8:00 a.m. And again, when we looked at retail there, even in the master plan, if you put industrial there or straight-up commercial or office, it would be significantly more traffic than 30 units that are live-work, all but, I think, nine are live-work. So when we looked at it, it makes it safer because now it's not a free-for-all. You could have come out in front of the blue building, the white building, or the granary. You were allowed to come out at any point you wanted along Water Street. Now it's focused to a one spot. You come out, stack on their own site, make a right or make your left. So we looked at a traffic signal there, and it doesn't meet the warrants to have a light there because of the offset with the post office and then going across the street. So staff felt this is much better, a much less intense use for this site. We were thankful it wasn't 200 units. If you remember right, when Mr., for those of that were here, I know, Mayor, you were here, and I think Steve, you might have been back on it too, Mr. Sage, that Mr. Salomi and Ferlito came in with, I think, 134 units. We didn't say no. They backed out just because of the cost ended up being too high at the time. So to see 30 units, we kept thinking it was 300, but it was 30. So we're very pleased with that.
Was Water and University temporarily four-way stop?
Yeah, I remember that. I was just going to ask that question.
During the main street construction?
Sometimes they would put a temporary stop sign out there.
I remember that too when I first got here. There was a temporary stop, but it was never a permanent four-way.
But it functioned well. I just wondered if that was looked at.
Yeah, you could see, yeah, you could see the offset, and actually, you're making me go on the wayback machine. That was all analyzed through the police department and the TIA. Because of that offset, then you couldn't, and you couldn't straighten the offset out because the elevator was there. So if the elevator was gone, then you could maybe straighten the whole thing out and make it a four-way stop, but you can't the way it's offset there. So the trade-off was, say, the elevator, the best we could, and then keep it like it is now at minimal impact. So I just wanted to say that.
Okay.
Any more questions for Nancy on the traffic? Go ahead. Okay. Thank you for that, Nick. So the big question in the room is, what's going on with the barn? And I'm happy to say that the barn is still standing after the work that's been going on on-site. I'm going to let Dominic Tringali continue the conversation and show you the very exciting plans. We're really celebrating the past, but inspired for the future, or inspired by the past, celebrating the future. Which one do you want to say? So here's Dominic. Thank you.
Good evening. Dominic Tringali with Mosheri Companies, with the architect. Actually, excited to be here. I think there's a lot that you're going to be happy with. I'm going to show you. It's a brief presentation. It's really a little bit of back and forth. Since we were talking about traffic, one thing I did want to mention, you know... Since we were talking about traffic, one thing I did want to mention, you know, we are making this more pedestrian-oriented type of community. So we're expecting people to park their car, leave it there, and actually walk more to downtown, get their coffees, especially with what we've done already and getting some calls and talking to people. That's the goal and the orientation that it's going to. So we're kind of excited about that. So let's go right into a brief little synopsis of everything. So we are preserving the elevator building. As you know, it was three structures at one time. We've kicked what we call the iconic one in the very beginning. We're turning it into a clubhouse and making it the focus. We're also going to keep the history of it and actually make the interiors tell the story of how Rochester started, how important this granary was for the community, and tell that story in a way that we think will be unique and different. We'll work with the Historical Society on that, but we feel that this is really going to be a focal point, and we've kind of focused all the residential around this building at the same time as well. So when you look at it, we are keeping this beginning portion. There's contamination on the site, as you well know. Some of the contamination fertilizer, salt has creeped into the building itself. So we'll be cleaning that all out, keeping the structure. I actually want to keep the awning nets in front as well, too, and then add this greenhouse on as an addition for the community to have their coffee there, meet, socialize. And then the interiors also will be decorated with the history of it and tell the story. And then at the same time, we'll be able to have it open to the community for tours, schools having tours there as well, to really keep this as something that will, will really work well. The bottom photograph is just a barn that was redone in Fenton, just as an example of kind of, you know, direction we're taking it and what we want to do. The upper slides are the existing building. A lot of decay, a lot of things that were, you know, done wrong. We do have a structural report that we'll be submitting that talks about this portion of the building, which is the most well-preserved. I was just in it a few weeks ago, it's kind of interesting. Underneath in that basement, it's actually cedar logs that are post with tar underneath that are holding it up. And actually, they, they held up well, except they kind of fluctuate. So we're going to have to move those, put some steel in there, get it more to building code and safety code, and bring it all up to par with that. Which the main structure, we'll be able to, I think, keep intact just by patching and doing some removal of the things that didn't work and that are failing. And then from there, we'll be able to keep the whole outside as the front portion shows you there that'll be on University. These are just the elevations that we're proposing, and that's to be developed a little bit more as well, too. But we definitely are keeping everything intact. So historically, we're going to try to keep it. The part that, when we did our analysis, some of the siding was taken down, it actually was replaced with T-111. So there's actually parts of it that are no longer really historic. So we want to actually restore it to original siding and get some things that really match that's going on through there. And those drawings will be completed with much more detail for the city to review before we really start any of this. Any questions on the barn, any more than that, or, I mean, the elevator? Yes?
Thank you. So you mentioned that you're going to reach out to the Rochester Avon Historical Society?
No, actually, I've met with them twice. And I actually went to one of their meetings and told them what was going on and what we're doing. And obviously, they have, they'd like to keep the whole structure, but, you know, this is the portion that we're able to keep through there. And I think once I explained it to them, they were, you know, I think accommodating for us.
Were you able to talk to Tiffany Deser?
Yes, she came, we met twice, and went over things with her. And I plan on getting them more involved once we talk about the history and get the story right and everything else.
Were you also able to talk to Deb Larson?
Could have been at the meeting, I went to one of their board meetings, there was about six or seven people there.
So I was, I was just kind of puzzled at the packet. So I'm going to give you a presentation that Deb Larson did back in 2010.
I think they might have gave me that one.
Okay.
Yes, yep, we have that packet and the two others.
And I appreciate all the correspondence from the granddaughter, but there is obviously a lot more history that is not captured in what was in the packet.
Oh, correct, no, 100%, right. So we'd like to preserve all of that, yes. I mean, I think we sent Vidya some packages that we didn't need to either, so there's so much information that they put together, and they were extremely helpful in giving that to us.
And how do you?
Tell us who those two people are.
Deb Larson is longstanding archivist at the Rochester Avon Historical Society. Tiffany Desermon is the daughter of John Desermon, deceased, a historical architect, and she has followed in his footsteps.
Thank you.
So the, the wood itself, so you're, you're going to replace the wood?
Correct.
You're going to keep the footprint?
Well, we're not replacing all the wood. We're, we're just replacing, like I said, some of it's patched with T-111. It was somewhere in that process, and it was just simply painted over. So we're going to repair the siding that needs to be repaired, keep what we can keep, and kind of work our way all the way around the structure.
Okay. I mean, are you going to try and repurpose the wood?
Well, the problem is some of it's contaminated. So we're working with SMNE, it's a big project there. Some of it, you know, the fertilizer actually soaked into it. So some of it is really tough to reuse because of that purpose with it. So, yeah, the contamination was the big problem. All those reports you see are about 20 years old, they're back in 2010. In all honesty, nothing has been done with that building since those reports were done. So in 20 years, it, it just got worse. So, and now we're stuck with what we have there, but we definitely want to keep it. I mean, we're focusing around the whole thing. When you see my architecture, we're focusing about the granary and what's there, and the architecture I'm trying to capture is, is what I think will work really well with it. So I'm excited for keeping that part as part of our project.
Thank you.
So moving on to the buildings themselves, I'm not going to go into much of detail, Vidya did a great job talking about it. So this is just what I call the 13-plex on Water Street, and these are the live-work units. The architecture, so that you know, I rarely am pulling some of the history that's not only in Rochester, but of the old train depots. The brickwork is going to be phenomenal, as you can see some of the brickwork on the pharmacy and then on Mill Street. I'm using those same details. You can see that arch, I'm picking up that same detail and incorporating it there. I'm excited about this architecture. I think it'll be great for, for just the downtown area and what we're trying to fulfill through there. So this is the six-plex that's off of University that you'd see. The site kind of slopes a little bit, almost like three and a half feet there, so the building actually steps with it. It's a combination of really brickwork, metalwork. It has that kind of older feeling, but has still that modern kind of viewpoint to it. So I think it's going to be a great mix for what needs to be there. The cupola is unique as well, too. I think it just makes a great statement as you're going through there. This is the other building, which is the other, what we call the live-work unit. This is the 13-plex that'll be off of Water Street. So explaining these units to you briefly, it's a three-story unit. The first floor is live-work. What we found is a big need, especially after COVID. People might not only go into GM or Ford or whatever two days a week now, so they're home. So they like to keep their office separate from where they live. So the first floor is designated as a flex live-work space that even an architect, a draftsman, an engineer, psychologist could have their own office there. It's by appointment only, it's not a retail bustling back and forth, it's more of a secondary work kind of area, but it's a great, what we think, flex area and a great need for this market in Rochester to have these units on there. We had a similar project in Birmingham, did extremely well the same way, was called Irongate off of Eaton Street, and we've kind of used that as our guide for doing these units, which we're excited to bring to here. So we have two of the buildings that are the, what we call live-work units. All the buildings are very similar. The other building is a townhouse, which is two stories, and that's the 11-plex that is towards the back of it.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, anything you want.
Okay, thank you. On the rendering, you show five or so for maybe sidewalks on the site plan Vidya shared. It had, I think, a few more than five. Which one is correct?
Yeah, let's see. Let me go to the site plan. This one is the correct one. So there are those sidewalks that come out, as you see. And then if you see the ones on Water Street, it's really around the corners, and there's this sidewalk, I've got a pointer here, I can show. Maybe not. Yeah, right here. Along here, here is this sidewalk that's the front here of these units that take you right to there. These units, you know, the sidewalks are all here. And then on the back units, you can see them, you know, here as well.
Right.
With the one in front.
Okay. It's, it's nice, I like the architecture. And the, the next middle, can you show the actual sidewalks on your rendering? So we can get a better?
Yes, yeah, their rendering's taken across the street. I know what you're talking about now. I'm with you, yes. On the renderings, we can show those. Yeah, yeah, I know what you're saying. Yes, yeah. You don't see them because of the landscaping that I put in front, but I'll show them on the next one going on. This is taken from across the street, and then you see the street, but you don't really see the sidewalks. This is just what we've talked about as far as the view of how the heights work. So you can see our building right here. We have basically the senior project next door, and then we have the Royal Park here, and then the downtown area here in here, showing the various, how it blends in, and I think fits really well with it. This is the, the new elevator with the addition of the greenhouse on it as well. Just some of the existing buildings around that you're all familiar with. And then this, I just put on there to show you, here's the downtown area, obviously, here's Main Street, and then you can see our development here. The elevator structure stays in the same spot, and when I did a Google Earth and threw it on there, you can see it really will make hardly any difference at all looking at Main Street down there. So that's the new structure that'll be way down there, and then the elevator structure remains the same.
What's the elevation change from the granary, the granary site and Main Street?
Let's see, Nancy? Seven?
I want to say offhand, it's 10 or 12 foot. There's a decent drop in there. I mean, across our site itself, there's about five foot of drop.
So it'd be from here all the way down to here. And here's the beginning of our site here. So we know from here to here is about four and a half feet. So, yeah, I would say a 10-ish, we think. I can get that exact number for you, though.
Okay, that's close enough.
And really, that's the whole presentation. Just quick, any questions I'm more than happy to answer?
If I could ask another question, are the units air-conditioned?
Yes.
Where are the condenser units outside?
Yeah, basically, they'll be placed variously around it, and then we usually put landscaping rounding and screening.
So ground-mounted?
Yes, ground-mounted, no, 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 no rooftop units.
Nick, I have one for you. Mr. Smith owned a, a house across Water Street, was that part of this?
No, so Mr. Mosheri was not able to get that, so he owns the home and the garage. So Fire Chief's here, I saw John step in, and he can talk a little bit about the fire access point, too, but, and we, I think we told them they had to get rid of the, the hay inside of the building because it's a fire hazard, or just tear it down.
In the garage at the house, yeah.
But they still own the home. They, we've approached them because we own the parking lot next to it, but at this point, Mr. Smith's family isn't ready to make a decision.
Mr. Smith is with us or not?
He is, he's slowing down a lot, but he's still with us.
Okay. All right, thank you. Rich?
Yeah, I guess regarding the work-live arrangements, will there be some sort of association that manages that? Because in looking through the drawings, you've got basically the garage behind the work area, and somebody could easily convert that to like a rec room or a basement or something like that?
They are for lease, so we manage it all in-house, and we have very strict guidelines, way better than if they were for sale. You got one neighbor that has overgrowth and another neighbor that's finally trimmed.
So this is all for lease, no sale?
It's all for lease, correct. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
All three buildings are for lease?
Correct.
Or just the ones on the streets?
No, all three.
So I might add that we, we worried about for parking count. Vidya and I spent some time on this, that you can't lease out the first floor to somebody else's shingle, so it can't be a hairdresser. You have to, you rent that unit, you're vertical. So if it would have been off.
You'll ensure the documentation.
Correct, yeah, it's in our leases.
Documents documents.
Correct, yeah. Yes. So basically, that's a great point I didn't bring up, but it's all one unit leased out. And that person cannot lease out the bottom unit to someone else. So it's basically a self-owned person who really owns that whole unit through there, which we think is a great kind of fit that will vault Rochester.
But they don't own it, they lease it.
They lease it, correct.
Leasing.
I meant lease, sorry.
Is there, this is for you and Vidya, those leases get converted, condoized. Is there any protection for the city that can be done at planning and site plan approval regarding that?
I think Mr. Crot, you're on the line. I saw Jeff here, so it's a good question, because that does happen a lot.
It does.
And then, because this, I would think, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, because this is, I'm just thinking here, but it's a special project, so we put our own conditions that this base, this, if we approve this, it's based on it being a rental unit for the reasons Mr. Mosheri said. They control it, and they make sure that everything stays the same. But if they wanted to convert to condos, I would think that would have to come back because it's not part of the special project.
It could convert it to condos, you could.
But you'd have, I think you'd have to come back here.
Break the top two from the bottom one.
Now, if it's not, as a special project, if we prove exactly.
Jeff, are you in, in here in distance?
I am.
The question is, at site plan approval, is there any way the city can protect itself in the event of an attempt or a conversion of this to condominiums in the future?
Yeah, what Mr. Banda said is correct. If it was, if it's being approved as a rental and they're changing it to a, a for-sale situation, it would need to come back to Planning Commission. And typically for condos, we require them to provide us with the condo docs, and we go through there, make sure, we go through with the engineer and the planner to make sure that it has the city approval requirements in there, and so that would be the opportunity. So if it's converted to a condo, we would require that all the condo docs be provided and reviewed.
If I could take it one step further, if they tried to split to office like this way?
Yes.
Again, we, this is per unit, two spaces, because it's a rental unit. If it went differently, office would be one to 200 and two for each unit. So they'd be way short of parking if they tried to create an office situation.
We just want your guidance and clear input in the language that is used.
We can actually put that in there if, if we go this route to the, in the, in the document for the special project reasons for us. We'll make sure we have that all done with the attorneys. Thank you.
How, how suc?
Oh, go ahead.
How successful is that in Birmingham? I mean, so you're renting an apartment, but you're renting a space underneath just for your office?
No, it's, you're renting the whole thing, and however you want to use it, you can use it. And it's worked out really well in Birmingham. I mean, basically, I don't know how many did coffee shops or anything, but I don't think they did any. I think they mostly kept it for themselves, and it's the, really the people who work at home now who use it as their home office is really what it is. And there's a big market for that.
You could make it a finished basement if you wanted to.
Well, it's not a basement because it's not in ground.
But I mean, if you wanted to make it a personal rec room.
You could do that as well, too. Yeah, it's a flex space, it's open.
And that was going to be my question, Dominic, how you doing?
Good.
Good. You don't have to use it as a business, correct?
Correct.
The option is there if you want to.
Correct, yes.
Are there going to be restrictions on what kind of business would be? That would, I would want to know a bit about.
Yes, yeah, no, we definitely want to put restriction on it. We don't want a salon or a bakery or anything like that. No, they're limited-use business, and it's live work.
Sales or anything like that.
Yes, and just to reassure you, everything you're saying is, we don't, Mosheri rarely And just to reassure you, everything you're saying is, we don't, Mosherie rarely sells their product, number one. They're all really for lease. So they're generally, they're going to keep this. And those restrictions are the same ones that we had in the Eden Street project as well too.
It's funny you say it because when I saw the rendering, you know, the first time I was like, that's.
He's just reading a note we had on the plans in regards to the live-work definition.
Yeah, so basically, we actually called it out already. Live-work spaces are single units for the residents in place of work. Ability to use business, the tenant, if they desire. If they use it for business purposes, it shall be limited to the residence, live-work. Additional, only one additional employee, business uses is limited for general public and it's by appointment only. Use proposal space. So we kind of already have that on the plans as well too.
So.
And whatever we want to refine it as a group, we can.
Right. As I was saying is, when I looked at this the first time, I immediately thought about the Iron Gate over in Birmingham, Main Street there. So you've got that. Now, with respect to construction hypothetically, would you plan on doing all three of these buildings at one time? Is this going to be a phase?
No, it's all at one time and beginning with the back buildings working our way out.
And of course, this is all just, you know, guessing right now. Time for construction, how long do you think you would be out there working at that site?
We're looking at twelve to fourteen months.
After it's developed, right. So talk a little bit about the development. What would go into the development of people who are living in that area? What would they, what would they see on a day-to-day basis?
Oh, okay. So yeah, I mean, the cleanup is a significant task. They've already started some abatement. As far as underground construction, we're putting in a hundred-year storm, which is crazy expensive and not to mention it needs to be compatible for infiltration of contaminated gases and liquids and such. So that's what they're going to see. Nothing, they won't see it, but that's what we're going to have. That'll take about six to seven months to do once everything is cleaned up there now. And then from there, you're looking at about really fourteen to sixteen months after that.
And one final question, do you anticipate coming to the city and requesting money from Brownfield for cleanup funds?
We have a Brownfield grant already.
You have the grant, but do you anticipate seeking any additional money beyond that?
Not at this time.
Okay.
We should say to the public watching, watch this, this is a Brownfield site, but the city with Rewald started the project for One Street. They were going to build the world headquarters of pure office, hadn't been in the planning commission, don't know if that would have flown. But they worked it through DEQ because this site is the leach from the Higby site, which was cleaned up when Rewald built their headquarters, not cleaned up, but.
Minigated.
Yes, exactly. So you can't clean this up. It's really bad stuff. So what you do is they vapor barrier.
So no basements?
No basements. So they were able to secure a one million dollar grant, the city, in the city's name to help clean this up. That was for, we started spending that money now through the Brownfield Authority for removing the buildings, the asbestos, the actual buildings themselves, but there's still a lot of underground work to do for vapor barriers. Like when you put the pipes in, everything has to be sealed differently because you can't let that stuff leach into the groundwater. So I think what Mr. Mosher said is right, it's probably at least six months to eight months to get that underground. So no one will know what's going on, but they'll be following the Brownfield guidelines. We have our own consultants working with that. It's been through the Brownfield Authority.
So because it's a Brownfield grant, there'll be no abatement?
That's correct.
Right.
And it doesn't come through your.
City would not give up any property taxes or anything like that for any amount of time. If it's just a grant that's between the state and whomever, yep.
Very important. Can you, can you sleep in that first level?
Sure, that's a good question.
You can sleep on the, on the ground level. They do put a ventilation system underneath the foundations.
Do you have any limitations on number of occupants? What if somebody wants to make there's a B and B or who knows?
No, well, you can figure that out. We're not going to plan on doing any of that. That's. The number of bedrooms is.
There are some zany people out there with zany ideas.
Zany people paying this kind of rent, I'm not so sure they're going to try to sublet it to make up a couple of dollars. But you could be right. But I'm going to go on a strong feeling that that's not going to happen.
I'm going to take it one step further. I talked to Dominic about this, that we'll work with Attorney Crot and their folks that we don't want a coffee shop. We don't even want a possibility of a coffee shop, anything like that, because that would have a different parking lot. There's not extra parking for the site. This is too.
So you're not going to slide businesses in that aren't essentially, aren't meeting the requirements.
Right. And anybody's home in Rochester right now, you can have home occupation. And you can have a little two-foot sign that says, I'm a tax attorney and you have to have normal residential traffic. So you can't have outside employees. So you won't be able to have one extra employee. But we'll follow the home occupation rules. We'll work that into the agreement that we have to have on this. We want to really tighten it down. So it is what it is. It's not an office.
And then we can put the lease together so that we can review the lease and everybody can approve and be happy. We're on the same page with you though. We're all on the same page. We don't want that either. They can't sublease it because it's our lease and we can evict them. So and Dominic said the leases and the rents we're getting for this will be similar to what we're getting at Iron Gate. So.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman?
Vidia, go ahead.
If I may just, if I may just add to what Mr. Tringali and Nick said. These are being proposed as live-work units. As such, when a special projects review letter is done and when we make a recommendation for the planning commission, it will strictly be live-work. It means you live and work in a unit. The work portion doesn't get separated from the live. And when Nick and I discussed the parking, the parking was allowed to be what it is shown on the plan today because it is being looked at as no different than a residential unit and the only business you can have there can be no different than a home occupation. So whether it is there in the lease or not, this project cannot be converted to anything else except a home where somebody lives and they also have their home office in it. It cannot be a business of any, any form at all. Just the approval itself will get negated if they try to do that.
In the special project, in the motion, we would put words to that effect through the attorneys. Fire chief came in, chief, in Vidia's letter, she was worried about a fire truck going between the buildings not being able to get out. And I know that you wrote a note.
Yeah, so just for the record, we met probably eight months ago with the Mosherie group. And they did actually show a cut through going into the parking lot of the mills. And I told them that I didn't need that, that under emergency conditions, we would be fighting most fires from the roadway. If the back unit was involved, we would want to put a fire truck in between the buildings. But we would station it off of the end unit.
The sixplex, is that it?
Off of the sixplex. So we had no issue with fire department access in and around the buildings. So I recommended to them at that time to eliminate that connection between the parking lot and the driveway. And they talked about trying to make it into a more usable than space to be able to tie the walkability of getting to the trail and everything else. And I think you could see that that's what they did. So fire department is fine with the current access.
Any suppression in the structures?
Yes, they're both suppressed.
Yeah.
And that makes a big difference also.
And chief, well, we were able to, because of what the chief worked out, if you would have had to punch an exit out, even with gates that they could blow through, you would lose parking spaces at the mills, very confusing. We were able to create that handicap walkway basically to get down where the trail connects. So that's, that's a huge amount of it. So we get extra landscaping. And as far as the trash receptacles, we have many forest ridge. The dumpsters are at the end of the driveway. So they go in, pick them up and back out to the driveway. So it is not unusual in this town to have dead ends.
No dumpsters here though. It's all strictly cans, individual cans.
So they'll come down, pick them up with the machine, dump them back out.
And then, Mr. Chairman, if I can, just if you think about residential people living here right now, you have the building that's rented by Mr. Smith that's has, I think, three different units in it. Then right next to it is the folk workshop, used to be a gentleman who taught music and that's a resident. But everything else on that street, with the exception of Water Street and Four Street, which is a small rental house there that I know he's talked multiple times about wanting to redevelop that. So you would have those primary two residents that may be inconvenienced at all during the construction phase. And then also another nicety about what's going on is the current fire main on Water Street, dead ends. And so this work will then allow that to get cross-connected, which will definitely help the fire protection on that whole side of town for us. So this is.
So that's a part of the project that'll be?
Yeah, that's part of the project, which was a really nice add that they're putting in. Then that'll really help us out from a fire protection standpoint.
Thank you. Other questions?
Just one, what is the typical square footage for one of these units?
No, it's just, we're just going to ask that.
Yeah, basically, they're ranging around twenty-two hundred.
Twenty-two hundred.
Right.
That's all three floors?
That's the, that's the townhouses in the back, downstairs, another five to six hundred. So could get up to twenty-eight.
Okay.
And the rent in general?
Yeah, forty-five to sixty-two.
I'm going to say the same thing, Nick.
You don't have to have a car though. You can just walk to town. Get the car payment gone, taking care of it.
Back.
We got a profferment to show you.
The, the connection to the trail, does that have to be done by license, Vidia?
It doesn't officially connect the trail.
Correct.
But it goes to another private property.
They are just proposing a trail connection. So I think as long as they're providing the stub that is already a stub, they should be fine connecting to the trail. They wouldn't need to do anything else.
It's on their private, it's really, it's a connector, but it's not part of the trail system. It's, right now, it's the mill sidewalk that goes to get to the system. So.
Does it need to be licensed or easemented?
Okay.
Yeah, what was that mention of a license?
Oh, the, well, it was for the land. Go ahead, go ahead, Vidia.
The license was mentioned for the landscaping. So what you need is an easement for landscaping, not a license. And Mr. McGee, you're correct. If this is going to be a trail connection, it would be a good idea to provide an easement for the sidewalk also just so somebody is not trespassing on a sidewalk that's located on private property. So maybe a sidewalk easement because this is being proposed as a trail connection only for this section.
I'd be more comfortable with that. Property sale, et cetera, and the way to preserve it is to do it in writing. So it's not a problem.
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk to Mr. Rewald about, he's obviously our partner and the adjacent property owner. My only concern is that he's been showing up on Mr. Rewald's title if he were to sell and see what that purchaser would have to say about it. But I'm not going to stand on, you know, ceremoniously about it. So we'll get across to it.
Let us know.
Get it figured out.
We'd prefer it. Let us know.
Yeah.
Nick, we have another work, live-work building in town. It's been there ten years at least. How's that done?
So it never caught on. So really, the people that live in the condos on Mill Street, it never even, I don't think it was a thing back then because everybody went to work. So it really was office on the first floor. It was a pure mixed use. So office, independent people lived in those and they still lease those out. There's a few that do bought the condominium below them, if you will, and it's three stories. But it never panned out, but that was, that's twenty years ago probably. So I don't think it was a real thing. And the condos have gone up in price, they're four hundred thousand dollars now. So, but you can lease the space out and not have to live above it there. So some do live and lease their own space, but it's not.
No one's living in that first floor space.
Correct. That's all pure office. So this could be a man or woman cave in the first floor or.
Okay. Other questions?
So I, I know he said there would be no actions tonight, but we, with the, the limited questions, we could set this for public hearing for August.
Commissioners, what do you think? You ready to move on with it?
With the revisions?
Yes.
As, as Vidia detailed.
If, if I may, I think the first step is not going to be approval of the special project. The first step is going to be planning commission making a recommendation on extending the boundary to include all of this as a special project. I would defer to Attorney Crot if it has to be a two-step process or can we do all of special projects and moving of the boundary in just one action? I would think it's two, but if Attorney Crot thinks it can be done in just one step, that's fine too.
You mean the step with city council?
Yes, because our ordinance amendment says that the special projects boundary line can be changed only from planning commission recommendation to city council. So I think first we need to get all of the property within the special projects boundary. And then the second step would be to consider the special projects itself. That could be the right procedure, I believe.
I'd like to weigh in on that because. Jeff, let me weigh in for one minute. We don't want, we do not want to just do the special projects boundary because that's, we're only doing that because we like this development, if that's the case. If we, if we automatically change the boundary, we could get anything. So I say they tie together. They might be separate motions, separate actions, but.
Same.
I would think city council would see.
Project is for this.
Correct, that is correct.
Yeah.
That, that would be my opinion. So.
I, I would agree. I think going up to city council one time would be for, with the city, because planning commission doesn't have approval on either item. It's just because it's a special project, the city council has to approve it anyway. So I think it just, it gets bundled up in one, one action. At planning commission sent up and city council will then have to approve to add it to the, the boundary and also then approve it as a special project. I don't, I don't know why it would have to go up and then back and then up again. I think you can all be done in one package.
Right. And if city council chose to not want to approve the project, they simply wouldn't amend the special project line. And then that, it would fail because they couldn't ask for that. So I think that's the tightest way to do it. And again, remember for people watching, again, before it used to be planning commission would approve the site plan, send the special project to city council for advisement and then back to the planning. We took that out. We wanted the city council to have the total control over all special projects. So now the planning commission makes a recommendation for special project to city council and then at the same time to amend the boundary.
So would we do?
In that case, I would, I'm sorry. In that case, I would recommend that a public hearing be set for consideration of the special project and extension of the boundary because technically you're doing both. So if the public hearing can be for both of those, it can go to the city council in just one step.
And the site plan itself.
We'd have to.
And the site plan itself, yes.
So all three of those actions in one meeting? Okay. Do you need a motion from us tonight? So would someone like to make a motion to that effect? That would set, set a public hearing for consideration of the special project, boundary extension, consideration of special project and then site plan. Is that correct, yeah?
I'll make a motion consistent with it.
I think that's appropriate.
I'll make a motion consistent with that requirement. If you want to state it, that's perfectly fine, but that's fine.
So we have a motion. And what are we looking at, by the way?
The August meeting. If, so we could set up for, Vidia, do you think you would have enough time to review it for the August meeting? That would be three, almost a month.
Vidia, I'll get you the changes within nine days.
Is that, how's that timing for you?
Oops, I'm sorry. I was off mute. The planning commission meeting in August is on August seventh, which means the review letter for the packet needs to be given to the city by July thirty-first. And today is July the sixth. So if I back up, if Mr. Mosherie can submit revised plans set by next Thursday, the thirteenth, at the latest, I can try and get the review letters done for the packet.
No problem.
Okay. So we have a motion to set this for a public hearing.
Eight, seven.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, just, just a discussion point. I will support this. You know, my, my, there's a lot of really good things it looks like about this. You know, the one issue I might have is that corner is just, to me, a very busy corner. That's like a dangerous corner right now. And if you add all those places, I mean, I know we talk about workspace and stuff, but you know, if there's something we could do.
Yeah, I think we're all forgetting, no, there's another exit there. So there are really two exits to alleviate it. So and really, it's more pedestrian oriented. The people we're talking to want to be there because they might own a shop downtown.
But I mean, it's, if you're walking down from Main, from downtown, like to the Royal Park, that's a, to me, that's a dangerous corner right there.
Yeah.
So I mean, that's just, that's just something to think about.
The mayor's got a good point. So I'm going to go back to TIA with the chief while he's still here. We have chief till the fourteenth. And see, if there was that worst, we went back to somehow a four-way stop.
That's what hits me.
That would be.
You're stopping all the traffic.
I think I remember why. It was almost, not a blind stop, but people, if it was a bigger chance, because it's so wide of a road, it was hard to get across the street.
But that can be addressed.
But we'll, we'll talk about that with our staff. Yeah, right. Yeah, we'd have to.
But you know, it really calmed that area down. I was disappointed when this.
We will get an answer quick for that.
Okay.
Yes, I think that's a fair statement.
People are, are walking, they're crossing, you know.
Lot of action.
They park at.
Library and walk across the Royal Park.
Correct. So there's a lot of that going on.
That's a good point.
Is it unreasonable to consider those types of notices that we had talked about by the Paint Creek Trail over there when the solerons, you know, like whether that's going in or not?
Pedestrian cross.
Yeah, exactly.
So what they're doing is they're putting one up to, literally, they put the foundations in today at the, by the Royal Park, the crossing there. So we're going to have the solar lights and that's going to be a flash stop. We'll, we'll find out again, is that too close? You don't want people racing up to the next one. But we'll, we'll have all those answers quickly and get them to Mr. Mosherie. So.
Because I know what the mayor's talking about. I agree with you.
No, it's crazy there. So, okay.
So we have a motion and any other discussion on the motion? Who, who seconded this motion?
No one yet.
Could we have a second?
Second.
The mayor seconded. The roll call, please.
McGee?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Bixson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Kenjuk?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for the presentations. Very good, very helpful.
Thank you for your time, gentlemen and ladies on the internet.
Thanks.
All right, the next item, number seven, is miscellaneous and I'll give that to Nick.
Yeah, just to give you a couple of updates, Vidia's just got the, the next package for the Rewald Building. So remember the Rewald Building's on the.
Which building?
The Rewald, the new Rewald Building. So in front of the headquarters where the grablot is, they brought in their plans, submitted them. It's good, good, and Frank Rewald is a partner in this one, but this package was incredible. It was a little light. Vidia got it, made some really good comments. It's a little more confusing. It is a Brownfield again, which technically doesn't matter to this board. But so we want to make sure we have all that information. It's three stories. So it'd be first floor, restaurant slash market. Not the market like we were envisioning before, like a food hall market. It's more of, it's the opera, it's Imlay City Smokehouse. I don't know if anybody's ever been there.
Oh, yeah.
Kind of cool foods that you go get and it's.
That's who would be in there?
Not them, but it's, well, I shouldn't say it's not them, but we don't know that.
Something like that.
Something like that. And then a restaurant. And then second floor office, third floor office. So ten thousand and then two fives. So that, we're going to make sure that that's buttoned up tight before it gets, we will not make it for the August meeting. There's too many questions. So good project, but we had to worry, we worked the fire department, how are we going to handle Third Street? I will tell you this, that we're going to require a traffic signal at Third and Second. So we're going to get that in now. So that when Mr. Mosherie, I'm sorry, when Mr. Suave comes in for the Milltown, he'll have to line his driveway up with. he'll have to line his driveway up with ours, so that we can control that problem.
Third and Second, that's a T, eh?
It's a T, yes, exactly. So we've worked with everybody, and that looks like the most logical thing to do. It'll slow down. It'll give some gap time. Getting off track here a bit, but we're gonna make, if the, if the Town Square Project goes, water will become one-way into town. So that will allow people to, there will be a gap now. If we stop them by the fire hall, give some time to clear the intersection and make a second. That's the goal. We looked at putting in Elizabeth. Then you have too many speeder roads coming in here. So we're gonna try to, we're looking at all that in the big picture. So that will probably be in September that we'll see that. Mr. Lochurko on the reserves resubmitted, downscaled the project significantly. And he brought that back, Jeremy, I think he sent that...
Because of wetlands, or?
Because he couldn't get that easement worked out with Mr. Kruck. So he had to stay off the easement, and which made his property smaller, which the fair is fair, so.
Yeah, so Vidya got those on Monday. They were turned in to me on Friday, and we overnighted them.
So if she can get to that by, for the August sixth meeting, we'll put that one on. So we'd have that and this at this point.
In September.
In September, no, in August.
In August.
For, so it could be the, it could be the granary, and it could be the preserves. I think there's two pain Louvres, which are, we're gonna do in one meeting. So one's for a little distillery, and the second one's for a speakeasy in Desert Oasis. So they need like seven car...
What are we becoming?
No, it's become, I'll tell you what, the Roxy is working out really, really good so far.
Say you want to go on to the Roxy?
Just for the chief's retirement party.
Yeah, it's been sold out every night. Chief, you still here?
Yeah.
He's gone. Mind if he gives you a quick update? He's been there a few weekends. It's pretty cool. It's good news.
You didn't invite us, chief?
The Eagles Club.
On top of going to the chief's party, we were, I was there at the first one with the dueling pianos. I was interested in seeing what the noise levels were and those sort of things, and how it operated, and making sure that my intent of capacity and their intent of capacity were equal, and they were. I measured sound level within the building. We peaked out at a hundred and one decibels inside the building with an average of eighty-four. I then went outside within ten feet of the building. The peak sound level out there was sixty-four with an average of fifty-four.
All the way around?
All the way around the building.
West in particular?
Yes. Then I went there the next week because it was a rock band. And because I figured pianos, rock band, might be some difference. And they peaked out at about a hundred and eight decibels, with the highest peak on the outside at sixty-seven with an average of fifty-five. And I will tell you that the loudest noises that I had was when the party bike went by. And that's, that's when we got the largest noise, noises from that.
Any neighborhood concerns?
I have not heard any neighborhood concerns at this point in time. I did go by several times at the beginning of the show, and then later on, traffic seemed to be, and maybe Chief Steve or anybody would have any other reports, but traffic did not seem like anybody was abusive with parking into the residential neighborhoods in those areas.
And I could add even, we went and did analysis of the decks. So at peak, sold out, two weekends in a row, the deck wasn't totally full. So there's, that's perfect. So they're doing what they said. They're going downtown, parking, eating, walking. And then when they leave the show, they walk back. So it's left some, it's...
Let me tell you my experience.
Okay.
We, we went to Shania Twin.
Oh, you did?
Yeah. It was a great, it's a great show. We went to DeLuca's ahead of time. We bought a downtown...
DeMarcos?
DeMarcos. We went to a downtown, or bought a downtown pass, so to speak.
Okay.
Our kids got it for us. And so we had dinner, walked over, went to Shania Twin. Oh, my God. It was packed, totally packed. And people were just having a ball. The decibels had to be two-hundred. It could be my age. And I think we were probably the older, oldest people in the building. But we had a great time. And people, oh, my gosh, I just had so much fun. This is a woman who is fifty-five years old, but she's been doing this for twenty-five years.
Wow.
And she looks like Shania Twain, and she sings just as well, with a huge rock band behind her. Rockabilly, I'll call it. And it was a lot of fun. We parked in the deck on purpose. Coming out, I mean, it functioned very well. There was no, no traffic backup anywhere, so.
That's the best testimony. And I can tell you, there was one complaint, and it was from me. And I was outside on my porch, and I'm like, you gotta be kidding me. It was the corner bar having a police retirement party. So we immediately called Chris, and, and he, they had just...
So he got visited by the good, the bad, and the evil, and I'll let you decide who's who. But Nick was there, Chief Steve went there, and I went there.
Oh, you went to the party.
Maybe I'm the evil guy. And we talked to him about the noise. I said, hey, you know, the last two weekends, you know, I've been here to check on noise, and just to let you know, your place is putting out more noise than the Roxy is. And he says, I apologize. He said, we've been having issues. Chief Steve talked to me. I got a sound guy coming out, and we're gonna take a look to make some changes. He said the volume control for the inside and the outside are tied together. So if they turn it up a little bit on the inside, it makes it louder on the outside. So he must have done some work, because I went by there this weekend, and it seemed to be better. But I'll keep kind of a check on that.
Chris has been very good about doing those things. So he's been a good, he finished all the outside now. The pillars are gone, the bars wider. He's just getting the landscaping in now.
Good.
And then the Roxy will finish the sidewalk and the landscaping in August. Remember, we still have nine more trees coming, five more trees coming. They put in four. And then the landscaping along the road. And I'm still gonna try to get that connector somehow from his north property line to University, where we can get a sidewalk that whole way.
Where is this?
So from the, Matt, if you can remember, from the north property line all the way to University.
From Fourth to University.
Yeah, Fourth to University, there's parking.
Behind it.
Behind, yeah, the back. So he'll have a sidewalk that kind of goes to nowhere. It's in our right of way that people are parking. If we could just push them over six feet, we could get green belt all the way up Waldorf, which would be awesome, so.
And just to add with the site plan for the granary is, it'll be really nice walkability, because keep in mind that the sidewalk now stops in front of the Mills Building.
Yeah.
And there is no sidewalk from there to University. And now with this development, we will have a sidewalk that'll now complete all of Water Street for walking. So that'll be a nice add.
The new owners of the Royal Park are, just like they said, dumping millions. And they're redoing every single room. They have replaced all the broken blue stone in the backyard. It looks brand-new. And they've been, they're having their vertical concerts. They've, they're not as community-friendly. They're really business-driven now, and it's still full. And you know, when Frank ran it, it was more like, hey, let's get the residence in during the week.
Their room occupancy, though, is high?
They're very happy. So, and they're, it's, and they're gonna phase in the rooms so that they don't have to shut down.
So, did the new owners of the Royal Park inherit the special project commitment that was made by the previous owners of the Royal Park to redo Elizabeth there?
So, so the, that's a good question. So the answer is yes. No, it wasn't, it wasn't from there. The two gives for Elizabeth Park were the condos that Rewalt did and Mr. Mosheri doing the corners. So Mosheri never built the corner, so we didn't have that money. So we started, you will see in Aug, we'll get you the timeframe. The master, Parks' master plan is coming back to this body on a full-blown, we look at the whole thing. The main focus is gonna be Elizabeth Park. Back then, we were doing a five-senses park. And the most shares putting in money Rewalt was. And now the residents that live adjacent are like, no, how about put in place stuff, make it more of a community park for people there. So that's what I think we're gonna do. And then Mosheri's, and Rewalt's money is still in play to be put there.
Okay. That's all.
So it's, we still have their commitment, that they're not off the hook.
That's the answer I want. I didn't want to say it's coming out.
I appreciate that.
General fund.
And they, yeah, because they kept saying, tell us what you want to do. And we couldn't decide what we want to do, so.
Are there a lot of children in there?
Uh, not a lot.
It's like, they come and go.
Play equipment and...
Yeah, we probably have play equipment again, and grills, and make it a little more community park. Because we don't want to build a parking lot there. We want that to be the neighborhood park. And people, people on Miller and Rewalt...
You would consider putting grills back in? Chief, are you good? I'm always good for grills. I used to come down to the municipal park and cut hot dogs and hamburgers.
I'll help you install the grills.
I got the shovel.
Very quickly, what are the acceptable decibel levels out there? You gave a reference of a hundred and eighty. What's the tolerance there?
So, think about it, that at eighty-five decibels, ocean requires hearing protection.
Okay.
At a hundred and ten decibels, it's considered damaging to your ears. And to the point is, is I'd have to look up the city code, but there is a standard for how many decibels at the property line. I believe it's someplace in the range of fifty to fifty-five at the property line. And when I was measuring it, I'm taking the worst-case scenario, and that's three feet away from the building.
Okay. So they're within the tolerance. That's all.
It's, I was surprised, to be honest with you, of how, I thought when I got a hundred and one peak decibels inside, I'm going, oh, I'm gonna be, it's gonna be outside. And I was truly amazed at the sound deadening that they had put into that building and things. And so, you know, the interesting thing is, is the product that they use to absorb it and the sound engineering. And they really did a wonderful job. They really kept the commitment to this planning commission of what they said they were gonna do.
Perfect.
Now, I know you're all a bunch of old rockers, and you remember going to Boss concerts, and you couldn't hear for... I couldn't hear the next day. I didn't wear any protection.
My wife woke up one night and said, turn on the alarm. Like, that's my ears ringing. So, it's that bad, yeah.
Okay.
Nick, what's the latest on the Townhome project that stalled out on...
Thank you. Thank you for that, too. So, chief's heard from Mr. Schneider twice. And I got in a bad mood last Thursday. And I called Greg with the chief in the office. I said, okay, you've told us for two weeks, you got your financing. When are you gonna start? I was there dropping my dog off at the groomer, and I saw scaffolds being unloaded. Got me excited. Greg, are those your scaffolds that are gonna do the job? Yes, there's a hundred-page document that he had to get through with the financer, that they finally got signed last Thursday. So I will say, within ten days, there'll be brick going back up, finish the roofs, and then he's gonna keep on going. The next, all those struts there, we had the engineers look at them to make sure they weren't sitting too long. But he had them all strapped and compressed. They're for the garages. So they're gonna build all the pads in the garages now, and then just keep on going. Once he gets that one building sided, dude, there's ten units, so he has eight more to go, and just keep on going, so.
So he got financing to build it out.
Yes. So he's back on track. But we, he kept telling us he wasn't. It was two weeks, two weeks. It's like, you don't have two more weeks. We need to just do something. So he finally did. So we saw activity there.
Thanks for asking that. That's good. Any other comments? Okay. Mr. Mayor, do you have anything? Rose, any more public comment? Anyone waiting for us?
No, there's no one waiting.
Okay, thank you.
So, I just wanna, I went to this during Mr. Mosheri's presentation. So what you see there now, they've worked closely with Randy McClure. So they got a demo permit, and then he went in there to make sure it was to be shored up so that it didn't fall over. Because when they had to take that one side off, it was scary. And the cedar things on the bottom are a little bit off the tire. So they shored it up with Randy's approval, and the engineers looked at it, and it will stay just like that now. Now they'll start refurbishing it after...
The windstorm is not gonna...
No. So that's, that was the key. They did not want a straight line to knock that thing down. Then everybody would blame them. And so they have it shored up. It's not going anywhere right now, so. But they didn't overstep their boundaries, that the DNRs like start spending the million-dollar grant, let's go.
I see they're signing theirs.
So they were proud of that, and so that's good. So I just want to know that they followed all the rules so far.
Okay. Very good. You got upcoming agenda items. Take care. Vidya, anything else for us?
Nope. Nothing more. Thank you.
Jeff, anything for us? Nope. All right.
Sorry, nope. All good. Thank you.
Okay. So no meeting in, no second meeting in July. No second meeting in August either.
Correct.
So we'll see everybody first Monday in August, which is the seventh, we said. Okay. Meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.